What did you do to your wrist?
I have a tussle, but I said that stabilizing the wrist helps. It doesn't affect the tendon. Just trying to get it better.
I think my belly could drop.
You have a second before you start?
I think I need to hook some.
I said it now, but you know.
You're fine. You're fine.
No, it's fine now?
Well, it's cooling out.
Oh, it's cooling out.
Well, we'll go ahead and, um, preliminary conversation is over about this. This is the Human Resources Committee meeting. Um, there is a copy of the Open Meetings Act at the entrance of the door here. Um, we have three agenda items, and the first being a follow-up presentation of cash-in-loop program by First Concord Benefits Group and Pro Insurance Resources. And, um, as you remember a while back, we talked about this, and, uh, they're here to give us some updated information. And do we need to wait for this to start? No?
We need to pass out the reply.
Okay. And then kind of go from there?
I think so.
Okay. While we're waiting for that to start, can you guys just reintroduce yourselves for some folks who may not have been in or remember?
Sure. Uh, my name is Jim Dolbert, and I'm from Lincoln, and I am, uh, part of First Concord. You know, First Concord is a company that provides cafeteria plan services to all the counties in Nebraska. We've been endorsing by the Nebraska Association of County officials since 2004. And so we, um, we work with every county to administer their cafeteria plan, provide them with documents, and, um, do employee meetings, that kind of thing, as well as, um, we work with all the counties to, um, design their medical plans. Some are, as you know, really small counties, and so they are part of what is called a trust plan that's provided, uh, by the, uh, NACO. And, uh, we work with them, review their plans, their benefits, and their costs. Um, and I've been working with Larry Dix for a number of years, but in the last couple of years, the thing that's on the, uh, I guess on the mind of most state governments is how to control our healthcare costs. And so, uh, in looking at that, we investigated the concept called cash-in-loop. Basically, cash-in-loop means we give every county employee an option of looking at taking either the county health plan, benefits, or a cash equivalent. And by doing so, that, um, that option, um, gives every employee the, uh, the choice between county health plan, or maybe I want to be on my spouse's plan, maybe I'll be on Tricare, or maybe I'll go on Medicare. And the cash option is the amount of money that the county decides annually to give to the employee to take that off. So that's kind of the history. We've been working with Douglas County, um, here since our first meeting back in February, and then we had another meeting in March, and we've investigated the cash-in-loop concept in just about every which way we can with Douglas County. And today, we have a, another look at county option plan. Um, and what, what, what we've looked at this time is the effect on the actual claim costs attributable to those people who are, um, sixty-five and over, they're on your current, they're on your health plan. So if we were to look at this illustration, um, what we determined in looking at the data that we got from the HR, we found out that there are, that there are ninety-eight full-time employees that are sixty-five or over that are on your health plan. Now, those ninety-eight people are all eligible for Medicare, but they choose to be on your health plan, even though Medicare, they've been paying for Medicare all along, and even though Medicare really has the best benefit program that there is. Uh, and it's particularly for the price. There are other employees that have chosen to go and waive your health plan and go on a spouse plan, or some other health insurance plan. And we've determined that there are approximately two hundred of those people. So they have waived out of your health plan. Okay, so if you, if you offer a cash-in-loop plan, and the, and the idea is to focus on those people who have coverage elsewhere, and the big majority of them might be eligible for Medicare, in order to focus on Medicare eligibles, we'd have to offer the plan to all full-time employees. So that would mean those current waivers would be part of the cash-in-loop program. So any cash-in-loop amount that we would offer would then automatically have to be offered to them. Now, Douglas County just so happens to have a self-insured health plan, so most of the cost of your plan are the claims. If you're paying the claims, Blue Cross is actually hired to do that for you, but then they send you a bill for the, for the amount of claims paid. And we asked Blue Cross to give us an accurate amount of claims paid on that specific group of sixty-five-year-old employees and older for a specific period of time, for a twelve month period, from July one, twenty-seventeen through June thirty of eighteen. The claims paid for that group of people, according to this on this sheet, amounted to three million and ninety-seven dollars.
How many, three million ninety-seven thousand?
Three million and ninety-seven thousand.
Okay.
And that, that's for the ninety-eight people plus their family, is that?
Yes. That's the ninety-eight people, of which fifty-four have single coverage, and forty-four have employee and spouse.
The, Jim, the two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar cash-in-loop, that's monthly, I take it?
That is.
Okay.
And that two-hundred-and-fifty is, is an illustration number only right now.
Right.
We haven't decided on that number, but, um, we have, we have over thirty-five counties that currently we've talked to about cash-in-loop and have adopted a cash-in-loop program, and they're contributing anywhere from the full premium, we're saying that the cash-in-loop is actually the premium we would be paying for the health insurance, we'll give you that in cash, to, I mean, it varies all over the board, but kind of averages around three-hundred-and-fifty dollars. Now, we determine that amount by looking at also what the employee is paying for the health insurance. So when we show a current premium here, the employees are paying, you're actually paying, the county's paying seven-hundred-and-forty-five dollars. In addition, the employee pays another fifty-some dollars. And then when we say employee and spouse, county's paying twelve-hundred-and-fifty dollars a month for those two people. In addition, that employee's spouse, that employee's paying another two-hundred-and-twenty dollars out of their own pocket. So if we were to take the ninety-eight employees that are sixty-five and over out of your plan, the county would save a million dollars in premium, and would save three million dollars in claims. Now, so what is, what, what are the costs of doing that? Well, you would have to give the two-hundred-and-fifty dollars to the ninety-eight people, the seniors, and that costs, um, two-hundred-and-ninety-four thousand. You would also have to then pay for those two-hundred waivers that are already waiving the plan, those two-hundred times the two-fifty. So that's a six-hundred-thousand-dollar expense. So our net premiums savings is around two-hundred-and-fifty thousand just in premium. Then we add the claim savings of three million and ninety-seven thousand. So we come up with a total projected savings to the county of three-point-three million. And, uh, that is, that's a big number. Uh, and that's, that's healthcare costs reduced by three-point-three million. Um, and we looked at some counties, when we look at the cash-in-loop, some counties save a significant amount of premiums because they're fully insured, and they've removed the sixty-five-year-old and, and they've transitioned to Medicare. Some counties, it's really more of a claim savings. In this case, it's really both, it's a premium and claim savings. Now, just recently, we completed doing, Amy and I completed doing information meetings to all your county employees. We've been to their county health department, we've been to corrections, and we've been here. And what we've, what we've done is, is, and why do people into what you call just education meetings on Medicare? And the thing that we keep noticing is that people are quite confused about what are the benefits of Medicare. And I don't know if it's a federal government plan or not to confuse people, but we've done a really good job.
County's pretty good at that, too.
Because Medicare is a really great plan, but it's hard to understand. And they keep making it more difficult by introducing new parts to it. So, um, but when you break it down, Medicare is, is really good coverage. It's as best coverage that you could buy. The problem is, people just don't know about it. And once they become familiar with it, they, they take advantage of it. Now, sixty-five-year-olds, when they become sixty-five, automatically are eligible for Part A, and it's just part of becoming sixty-five. Uh, there's no cost to it, but you don't use it because you have a group plan. So theoretically, you'd have double coverage for being sixty-five. You've been paying a lot all these years in your paycheck for Medicare, but you can't have it because you're working. People today are working beyond sixty-five. Sixty-five is no longer that one magic retirement. So in county governments, we're finding a lot of people over sixty-five continuing to work, and there's a large number of them working for Douglas County.
A good chunk of your ninety-eight are on the county board, aren't they?
Okay, so when I'm in Phelps County, the same thing. It doesn't matter if I'm in Sharon County or Dundee County, it seems like there might be a few board members over sixty-five. But, um, it's, it's, uh, it's such an acceptable benefit now, um, within county governments, but because of the high percentage of workers that are over sixty-five, being very productive and good workers and everything, but the problem is, their health costs are so extreme that they're affecting the members of the total group. Claims that you see here, there's three times the amount of claims than you're collecting a premium. So you really can't operate a trust plan long by doing, if you're only going to collect a dollar, but you're going to pay out three, your, your plan's going to be upside down, or you're going to have the older people pay for it.
Okay, question. So the three million in claims, obviously, is that's based on all ninety-eight employees opting out?
Yes.
So what's the magic number to break even or make a, have it be beneficial? Because we, I mean, I'm going to assume that all two-hundred that are waiving out of our insurance anyway are going to take advantage of it.
That's true.
So that's a six-hundred-thousand-dollar known number. So how many of the employees, of course, we won't know, you know, if, if the one, if the three million, that three million isn't equally spread out among all ninety-eight employees, that's, some of them are going to have higher claims, others, so we're, we're not going to know who's going to waive out and what that impact's going to be, but is there a way to estimate, between the claim savings and the premium savings, how many of those retirees we would have to waive out in order to come out on the positive, given that we'll have to pay out six-hundred thousand?
Probably only one. You've had a couple that almost hit the max. Because you, you have such a high reinsurance number, I mean, your stop loss is four-hundred-and-fifty thousand, and I understand going to five-hundred thousand, five-fifty in January, maybe. That's a really big number for a case this size. Thousand life cases or two thousand that I've worked with in the past, you know, I've never recommended, I, I don't think I would recommend that high a stop loss. So you're going to have, you're, you're going to probably have a claim going to four-fifty, because maybe it just takes one of these people to go on some other plan. What I can tell you is, when we started this in twenty, uh, in December of twenty-sixteen, and we, and I started going to all the counties in Nebraska that indicated, uh, interest right of what, they were all on the Nebraska NACO Health Trust Plan. And that, at that, at that point in time, we asked all the counties for a fourteen percent rate increase, which is extremely high, because their numbers are already high, your health insurance is already so high. By the time we finished that year and looked at the trust plan for the following year and for twenty-eighteen, we didn't need an increase back. Claims had reduced that much, and we had, we had enrolled by then twenty other counties. Now we're up to thirty-five counties. But the trust plan didn't need an increase. Went from fourteen down to zero. Now we, we took an increase, Larry Dix and trustees decided to do a three percent increase anyway, which is good financial sense, but I think the effect might have been the cash-in-loop plan. That's hard to analyze that, because I don't, none of us have the time, I don't know if Blue Cross has the data. They probably have the data, but we'd have to analyze every claim.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So are you saying we kick off the ninety-eight employees off our plan?
Can't kick it off. It's opt, it has to be optional.
We would transitionate from the current plan to Medicare if they choose.
If they choose, yes. And if I go to Medicare, I get the two-hundred-and-fifty.
You do.
But my Plan D is going to cost me, because it cost my wife more than two-hundred-and-fifty.
Okay, you're exactly right. So what happens is, they get the two-fifty, and they don't, they don't have to pay the contribution that they're now paying for the health insurance. If you're an employee and a spouse, you're paying two-hundred-and-twenty dollars, which you wouldn't now have to pay. And if you're an employee, you're paying fifty-five dollars. So now you've got three-hundred-and-so much dollars, new money to buy Medicare supplement and Part B. And that averages about two-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars a year.
There is an income-based, income-based rate adjustment that will affect people, depending on their income, but the, the average premium for Medicare Part B is one-hundred-and-thirty-five dollars per month, um, and then the cost of a supplement plus a prescription drug plan. So most people fall in that, of course, not everyone does, but most people fall within that, that price point. So at that point, you're looking at, um, one-hundred-and-thirty-five for Part B, typically twenty-five for a prescription drug plan, so we're at one-sixty, plus the cost of a Medicare supplement, which on average is about one-hundred dollars a month. So that's, that's why we start with this base point of two-hundred-and-fifty dollars, although Jim had said, you know, it ranges from county to county, but that's, that's why that number is kind of the lowest that we suggest.
Thank you, she more considerate.
And benefit points. Go ahead.
The, um, so someone opts into your program.
Opts into?
What is the percentage of opt-in in other counties?
Of the sixty-five-year-olds that participate?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, of all employees plus, you know, those over sixty-five.
Okay, some counties have no waivers, because they're in a town where they're, they're the best employer in town, some of the counties. That happens quite a bit, actually, in Nebraska, small counties, counties, county is one of the best places for work, so we have really no waivers, really, maybe one or two. Two-hundred doesn't surprise me here, you have a lot of employees, and you have a lot of great employers here in town. So some, some benefit plans are going to be better than the counties. Uh, but in a small town, it's hard, it's hard to beat their plans. But they have a high number of sixty-five-year-olds, seventy-five-year-olds, and so on. When we sit down with them and talk to them about Medicare, just about all of them go on Medicare. They just didn't know about it. And it's, it's better coverage, they're deductible, they're no co-insurance, they're no co-pay.
See, and I disagree, that's better coverage. I, I have to disagree because of personal experiences with my wife and many relatives who've had a fight, and have realized we might have to fight our insurance company. I, I think you're feeding us a bunch of sales pitch and hogwash, yeah, I should. To me, it doesn't make sense for those of us who may be high users to go off the plan. The, many doctors won't take, you have to be, yeah, I'm going to stop.
No, that's fine.
Pardon?
There are, people ask this all the time, will my doctor take Medicare? Well, generally, yes, if you're already, you know, receiving services from that doctor group. Um, and, but most doctors in hospitals that I know do accept Medicare, because, I mean, after all, Medicare's the largest group insurance plan there is.
That's true.
That's fifty million people. And, um, I, you know, you hear examples, maybe you've heard examples of where it's not as paying as well as the group plan. I don't mean to tell you to say that the group plan here is not good, it's an excellent group plan. I'm just saying Medicare can be better in a lot of ways. And I, I have example, like, an example, I have an example of employees telling me, yeah, I, I know somebody on Medicare, and they didn't have to pay anything, they had two-hundred, three-hundred thousand on a claim, and they didn't, didn't have to pay anything. And I personally have a lot of clients on Medicare, lots of them, and I, that's what I hear from them, is how good it, how good it is.
My quick analysis was just expressions.
And, uh, what I, what I think might be a good idea is to try it for a year, see how it goes, and, because like you said, to recoup that six-hundred thousand that we have to pay out, you potentially could target maybe a handful of those retirees, or those sixty-five or older. So is there, is there a risk to the county? I suppose there is somewhat, but if you say it's mitigated, because you know it's not going to be zero, I mean, some people are going to take it, I would think. So you give it a year, you see how it goes, and if it really is a tremendous benefit, you keep going, and if it's a loser, then you can come back and revisit it.
That's true. And that's what I, that's what I tell all the counties, is that it's, it's a plan to your benefit, and so is the two-fifty revisited, because the two-fifty may be three-fifty the next year.
So how do you, uh, profit from people converting over?
Well, we sell the products, okay, we sell the Medicare products. And, um, what, what we provide to the employee can be one of two, can go one of two ways, through the original Medicare, uh, pathway, which then requires a supplement, although they don't have to buy one, but we recommend it. Or the other pathway is a Medicare Advantage program, where there's no supplement, but it's a, it's a privatizing Medicare.
So could, does that mean somebody who opts in has to buy the package from you?
Well, we would prefer that. Uh, there's, uh, since this is a NACO endorsed product, it is not a requirement, NACO does receive part of its earnings, what we, what we sell and what we make, we, NACO also earns a percentage, as confirmed, we are endorsed by, by them. Amy and I, uh, we were invited to, and Marianne knows this, we were invited to present this to the executive directors of all the states in October, so there were fifty Larry Dick groups there, and we're now talking to the Penn State Academy about introducing the Nebraska program to them, because it just seems like most counties have the same demographics. They have older workers and, um, pretty good benefits. And another thing is, a lot of the counties pay a high percentage of premium, and so the county's expense on premium is just, every year just goes up another eight or ten percent. And, um, part of the driving force are the claims.
Sure.
And again, the reason that, Mark, I appreciate, you know, you have your own opinion, but we've talked and talked and talked and talked and talked about the increased cost of our health insurance, and so all I'm doing is offering an option, there's, there's no hogwash, there's no gitcha, there's no, none of that, it's to present something that we could react to, to decide whether or not it would be of benefit to us.
Marianne, I talked to salespeople four and five times a day for over forty years, listened to four or five sales pitches a day, and all I'm hearing is a sales pitch with, if any benefit, is their benefit.
Well, that's not true, Mark.
That's what I think.
You're not listening.
No, I'm telling you what I'm hearing. Well, I'm listening, I'm analyzing. I just disagree.
And I, I said, I appreciate that, but there's others around the table that, again, we could sit and complain and bitch and moan about the increased cost of our health insurance and not offer anything that we, else that we could look at to possibly reduce our costs. That's all I'm saying.
I, I'll be turning sixty-five this year, and therefore, from a purely selfish perspective, I've been looking into, you know, what, what do we do? And I was actually frankly kind of surprised that what I'm told is, well, you want to stay on the county's insurance, it's so much better than the Medicare. Well, fine, but that, you know, that, there may be an opportunity for the county to save a little bit of money here without taking away from my coverage. I'm sure we'll have to look at it.
And that's all it is, is an option to look at, because again, nothing else has been laid at the table, and just laying an option of people that I knew were presenting it to other counties that has been beneficial for it.
It's good to have the options here more about it. It is really confusing.
It's very confusing.
To most, most people.
To most, most people.
And health insurance is personal. So again, each person needs to decide whether or not it's a good move for them.
But even that, eventually, we're all going to be on Medicare. You may say, I'm going to stay on the county health plan. But you're not always going to be working at the counter. You'll be on Medicare or you'll be without.
Except we, we have retiree health insurance, at least for now.
Till, till they're sixty-five.
That's right, yeah.
And they go on Medicare.
That's true, that's true.
Eventually, you're going to be on Medicare. Get the little Medicare.
Yes. So is that what I don't get is, is Medicare is a better plan if you just look at it, correct? It's a, if you just look at it on paper, it seems to be a better plan.
It is.
So what is the disadvantage of going to it?
Transition, if I may. It's the confusion. And so we have group insurance. We're, we're employees, we're accustomed to our employer providing insurance. So that is what we know. So any kind of change can be burdensome and especially when, as change, change can get more difficult. So people are just, they don't know where to go. They're sent to a website, they're sent to an eight-hundred number. They're, how do you navigate?
But you're in there to help them with that.
What we do, and this was back to your original question, PJ, is yes, we're compensated if we enroll somebody into the insurance plan. But far before that, we are offering meetings for your employees where we help them enroll in Medicare Part B because that is a process that they need to, that's the first step they need to take. We're also educating them on Medicare, what the deductibles are, what the coinsurance are, what the copays are, as well as their cost and their exposure to out-of-pocket medical expenses if they choose to transition to that. That is all done well before enrollment would ever be questioned. And so that's another part of the service. Do we, will we benefit if we enroll someone? Absolutely, that's how we make our living. But we're offering more than just come sit down and sign this piece of paper.
I'm not getting invited to the newspaper or through direct mail every week to dinner.
Exactly.
So you're not the only ones who have plans?
No.
I don't know if you're the only one who has a, what you call a cash-in-lieu plan. That I don't know. But if there's somebody else, I would like to hear what somebody else has to offer. So I can do a comparison. And I would lay dollars to them, it's a pure offering, to ten other people offering it.
Exactly. Okay, the cash-in-lieu plan is really the county's plan. It's not our plan. Cash-in-lieu is a, is a, you know, I guess, an option that you would add to your cafeteria plan, to your plan. But what, what we then do is present it to the people, all employees being eligible.
Okay, this county plan, I have friends who do what you do. They would love to come in and sell us their benefit packages. So not only are there ten people, this is a county plan, there's a thousand people in Nebraska doing what you do.
This is a NACO?
I, I don't care if it's NACO. I don't care if it's NACO. Why are these two people better than anybody else?
Mark, nobody is saying anybody's better. It was that there was nothing being presented by anybody to save money in, on our health insurance plan. This is just an option. I'm not saying it's the end-all-be-all.
Then let's invite ten other people to do this.
You, you have had the open door to invite whoever you wanted to try to save money on our health insurance.
But I've never really been in lieu of plan.
Well, okay, that's why I'm bringing it to the board.
Now, now I'd like to bring ten other people.
Well, you bring whoever you want, Mark.
Now, in that regard, the cash-in-lieu plan is a, is an option that is a part of your, like I said, part of your Section one point five plan currently. So that's a pretty easy thing to adopt, is the cash option, just... Now, the idea then is, how do we come up with the two fifty or three? What is our cash option amount? Well, that's for you all to decide. Okay, then, okay, here's where the work comes in, though. To, to sit down and, and educate people that are sixty-five, seven, seventy-five years old who have never bought health insurance and, and their spouse. So you got, you got two people who have never really had to buy health insurance because their employer did it all, all this. And those people have to then trust you in order to buy something from you. That's not easy to generate. It certainly doesn't, it's certainly not, it's just going to confuse them to have ten people show them the same thing. Because you know that Medicare is so highly regulated, the products have to be identical. If I sell a Medicare supplement, Plan G, it's the same exact plan that ten other guys have. There's no difference, absolutely no difference in Plan G plan or Plan S.
And that's whether you're in New York, Nebraska, Texas, it doesn't matter. They're standardized with the exception of two states. And if the company wants to offer a Plan G, they have to cover it the exact same way. What varies is the price. So we've processed Plan G, it's the same as mutuals, it's the same as Aetna, Humana, it doesn't matter in certain company, but they charge significantly different prices for the exact same coverage.
So Medicare probably stays at the same price no matter where you are. I would think everybody selling is probably at the same exact price.
Well, Plan B, like I say, Plan A is free, that's the hospital portion. Plan B, the medical portion, is a hundred and thirty-five fifty in twenty nineteen. And there is a NACO deductible for that. Now, that's Medicare, right there, A B. And then a D, it's a prescription for your drug plan, and those are all the same.
Yeah, they have to be standard. And so no matter who's coming in to sell it, they have the same price. What did you say about the income level can change the price you're paying?
Okay, so the government, the government says that if you, your income exceeds a certain level, there will be an income-related additional premium. So there's an adjustment. You'll pay a little more on Part B and your Part E. It's, it's kind of like...
Is there just one step?
Well, it's, there's...
Are there a lot of steps?
There's a lot of steps. The highest, I think, let me recall, on, on Part B, everybody pays a hundred and thirty-five fifty.
Yeah.
In twenty nineteen. The most, the, the highest you get is like four hundred and ninety a month. But you have to make, you know, over half a million dollars. I, I, a lot of times I forget to bring it up because a lot of sixty-five-year-olds are making half a million dollars. That's, um, hundreds. Except for Ron, Ron, on this table. But any of that, it's all...
So, so I, so I have a question. So the two hundred and fifty dollars a month for your average employee that's not making half a million dollars a year, that will, will that two hundred and fifty dollars a month cover what you need to buy for your other parts?
With the conversation that they're putting into the...
Including, yeah, because they're going to save on the premium and they get the two fifty.
Yes.
So all, so then you get that, so that, you can use that to pay for that. Might even come out ahead, who knows? And then, like, for example, right now, we have a two hundred and fifty-dollar emergency room copay. We have a fifty-dollar urgent care copay. We have a thirty-dollar doctor copay. You don't have to pay any of those copays if you have all of those parts.
That's correct.
So I'm having a hard time understanding why it's not a good deal. Because unless, you know, unless you go, there's doctors that won't take you or you have longer waits or what, what is the downside? I mean, I, I don't see the downside to it.
With original Medicare, so assuming that Medicare supplement and the prescription drug plan and utilizing the federal program, AME, that's called original Medicare, any doctor in the country that accepts Medicare will accept any of your supplemental insurance, again, because it's standardized. So that's, that's that side. And typically, people are choosing a Plan G for their Medicare supplement, which leaves them with about a one hundred and eighty-five-dollar annual deductible. No copays, no insurance, one hundred and eighty-five dollars out of pocket. On the opposite side is a Medicare Advantage plan. And so Medicare has outsourced the payment of claims to a private insurance company, such as United Healthcare, Blue Cross. In that, on that side, everyone pays for Medicare Part B, that one hundred and thirty-five dollars. Typically, there's no additional premium on those plans. So no additional premium, but on those plans, you pay copays. And on that side, there are networks of doctors and hospitals. So you have an open network with hardly any out-of-pocket medical expenses in exchange for a premium to an insurance company. Or you have a plan where you have copays and you use a network of doctors in exchange for no monthly premium. So they have two very distinct choices on how they'd like to supplement their Medicare. And so either side, even in the examples you just gave, typically, the primary care copays on the Medicare Advantage side are about five dollars a month.
Right.
Urgent care is a thirty-dollar average copay. And so even then, the out-of-pocket exposure, there's no deductible, so there's no coinsurance.
Because if you're over sixty-five, the chances of you going to the hospital, going to an emergency room or having an overnight hospital stay, I would think is a lot higher than if you're younger. So you are, I don't see how you would not come out ahead going to Medicare.
And you know, whenever we pitch this or look at plans to our employees, it's probably just as important as always the network, you know, can I go to the doctor that I want? And what you're saying here is just everybody like in the Blue Cross Blue Shield network, that all those doctors would accept Medicare. So you don't really have that issue that you would have to change doctors, right?
I don't know of a doctor or a hospital that doesn't take Medicare. Some hospitals are going to take Medicare.
They don't?
Maes.
So I just don't get...
Maes.
I'm, I mean, I honestly don't see what the downside to trying it is. I, I, there is the risk of six hundred thousand. We have to reach that point, but I, I just, I gotta believe there's going to be a handful, at least a handful of people that would take it.
And it's all opt-in, right? And so like you say, it would be like on the cafeteria plan, just an opt-in option.
I mean, I think it's worth a try for a year and seeing what happens.
I, I don't know the downside, as long as it's opt-in.
Well, that's the worst design. What'll, what'll probably happen is people that are sixty-five currently working are probably thinking about what Medicare is going to do for them in the future. Or may not already probably thinking about it. So now what do I do? Well, I don't do anything until I quit work. And then I got all this tax stuff. And that's, that's worrisome, frankly, for a person that's ever bought insurance. So we're here representing the county as a third party to assist them. They can buy from us or they can buy from ten other people. I really don't care, you know? I mean, we're here to help you save money on your health insurance premium and provide a service. And, uh, and I've, we've been doing this quite a while and we own the products. We would probably get a high percentage that go on Medicare. And then all this would really start to make sense because they would start talking to their people that work together and this grows, builds on its own and, and becomes a real benefit to the employees.
So what would be the process? Well, to me, one of the key things would be, you know, right now, you plug two fifty is, how does that number really get determined on, like a county-by-county basis?
Well, counties have asked me for an advice. Generally, it's based on what they're paying out of their pocket for their premium now. And like I said, a lot of counties, in the smaller counties, there's, they pay all those things. And so we usually need a higher number to make it work. Because what we're trying to do is, is have the employee end up with the result being the same as they are now. I mean, good insurance, great insurance, with no more expense. So we, we, I looked at the two fifty, added the five, the fifty, and got three hundred. Well, that's going to be enough money for a person to buy a Medicare supplement and a Part B plan. It's also enough money to go on the Advantage route and have a no premium, but have three hundred a month toward the out-of-pocket maximum of, say, four thousand nine hundred. So either way, it's a win-win. So that's the way we peg it. Now, some counties have said, well, our premium is eight hundred dollars a month for the employee. That's what we're going to give them in cash. We're going to treat everybody the same. But in that case, we have to worry about the enrollment on the health plan because they're all, people are going to want the cash.
Sure.
But here we don't. Don't worry about that. But I think two fifty just seems right, just kind of, I don't know why. And I like to say that it's an annual number.
Well, we can find out easily. We can just find out what a cost, what, what the average of the premiums are people pay and then what the costs are to enroll and just come to a number that's at least break-even for the employees of not giving them some kind of incentive.
You give them a little incentive to share and tell them they can share in the savings.
You have to remember that the waivers are going to benefit as well. So we try to keep that number kind of lower.
Right.
Sure.
That's an expenditure down now, that's what happened. So we're going to have the six hundred thousand at this point. Waivers are going to take the money, so we're starting there. Now we've got to go up from there. Well, we'll more than get this handled by the claim centering, but they'll, they'll have to take a little time for us to, to meet everybody and, and work with the mediator.
And you didn't have the claim savings numbers when we first talked about this, did you?
No, we did not.
Okay, and that was quite an eye-opener for you when you...
It was like, wait a minute. Well, you know, and I've been working with all the counties that were, were smaller, okay? And so they did have the claim savings number out there. They're fully insured. Until I went to Buffalo County and found out that they, and started working with them on their self-insured plan. And it's all the claims that are potential, that are designated for those over sixty-fives. And so then it, yeah, it became, and as we're working with these other states that have self-funded plans, it became apparent that we should look at the claims here. And we were able to get those very quickly. And I was, I was a little taken back at the number.
I am too, because our total claim spend is about thirty-six million. And of that, three point three, so about ten percent of that is the ninety-eight employees that are sixty-five and over.
That was a high number, two eighty-two, three million. But then again, I, then...
That's not unusual.
Well, of course, because they're higher utilizers. Sure, of course.
Eighty percent of them. So, so if the board decides to go forward, then basically when they're, this would just be another option for folks to look at, just like the HSA plan that we offer and the regular insurance that we offer. And then we have this option to offer them as well. And it's up to the employee then to do what they feel is, is best for them.
Do we still have the Tricare supplement? Do we, I mean, that's really, in my mind, that's kind of comparable. Fifteen years ago, whatever, somebody comes to us and says, you've got veterans that are not taking advantage of that. So I mean, if, if I'm being told I don't want to participate in Medicare because the county's plan is better, the county is leaving money on the table. That is worth, what kind of, can we pick that money up?
So thank you for presenting and we'll be back in touch.
So our...
Our wonderful presentation.
I've got a nice few slides. That's one of them. That's what we set a little bit back.
No, we were talking about that. That's what we think is like, this whole check on the, it looks to me like...
Oh, and then this is the annual amount, but this is what they, I'm not sure it's going to tally it. Okay, makes sense. This is the monthly amount. The board pays for single counties.
You know, I think last time we had this meeting, we had Bernie Heffernan come in and talk about how he represents Advanced Capital Group and really tell us a little bit about the whole change in the fiduciary atmosphere regarding four fifty-seven plans. And we thought that was interesting, so we asked him for a proposal. And in the meantime, another firm, John Young from Cap Trust, Patrick and I talked to him and had like an hour and a half telephone meeting and he talked about, you know, and reaffirmed some of the things that Bernie had said. And, you know, talked about his firm was Cap Trust and brought, brought us through the services they could provide and things like that. And so we asked him to submit a proposal too. So we have these two proposals. And then I know, Mary Ann, you were at a, a NACO event where Nation Y was there and presenting some issues regarding four fifty-seven plans and, you know, what's the best way to run them. So I think these things are all coming up to this issue that we, you know, from both a fiduciary point and really from looking at, at the plans and trying to get the lowest rates and best deal for our employees that are enrolled in them, that, you know, it might make sense to retain a four fifty-seven fiduciary. And, you know, in our four fifty-seven plans, we don't pay. It's all employee contributions and we, we just, you know, are supposed to oversee it. And both these... And both these gentlemen agreed that, you know, to continue that concept is that for the people enrolled under the Douglas County plan, these plans would be allowed, allowed to charge a small, like, three basis points fee to cover their costs. So the co, county still wouldn't be writing a check, but we would, in, in essence, have like a form of fiduciary or, uh, over, oversight, oversight over these plans. So, and with that, I'll let Patrick talk some more.
And so the cost, you have the difference in the cost. The cost that would be the employee from both of these companies is pretty much very similar. And it, so for, for Advanced Capital Group, which is Bernie's group, the fixed cost is fifty thousand dollars annually. And that's again, a number that does not come out of the county's pocket, it's charged to the participants. And then, I'm just looking at the. The cost for the Cap Trust is a little bit higher in the first year, I believe it's fifty-five thousand. And then subsequent years, it's forty-five thousand annually. So.
The other one is fifty, oh.
Right.
So they're, they're pretty.
They're, they're very comparable, especially considering that, um, you know, the county's not footing the bill. For me, after listening to both the proposals, the advantage I have, you know, is knowing that I've known Bernie for years and his dealings with the county and his previous, with his previous employers. I just trust the guy. I know the guy, I trust the guy. He's very impressive in the previous relationships he's had with the county. He's local. I would feel much more comfortable going with somebody I know and trust and have a long track record with. And that would be Bernie's company.
What was that company?
Advanced Capital. And they're, they're out of Kansas City, but you know, this was all his region, whereas Cap Trust, John Young, is out of Detroit.
And, and, you know, and I'm not saying he's, he, he had an impressive proposal as well. But again, Bernie being lo, uh, local and having seen him work for so many years firsthand, I just have a much higher comfort level than Joe does too.
I mean, we'd be a lot, you know, we wouldn't really have to educate Bernie.
That's right.
And forget my ignorance, but is this something new that we're gonna be offering or do we offer it today, four fifty-seven?
Well, we've had four fifty-sevens ever since I've been.
How many employees are participating in it?
Oh, boy, I don't.
That we're gonna, that we're gonna charge fifty thousand dollars to you.
Eight hundred.
Okay, that's a, that's a, with more than two or three.
Yeah. And we really have to have a fiduciary. I mean, we can't do it ourselves. That's right.
Is the fiduciary.
Okay. I mean.
And so what these guys would offer is they would go, right now we have, what, three providers, Voya, Nationwide, and who's the?
Edward Jones.
Edward Jones. So they would, you know, go back and, uh, look at all these guys and give us, uh, on a fee basis, how much they're charging. And, you know, be able to compare the three providers and their fees, be able to tell us if they thought those fees were reasonable or if they were heavy or, uh, and then also, uh, we would potentially ask them to, uh, study our plans. And see if they think, uh, there would be a benefit moving from three plans to just one plan. And, you know, they would act, kinda act like a, a plan consultant, very similar to what we have on the pension plan. Uh, these are guys who kinda are experts in this, uh, work in this every day. And they would be able to provide that expertise to, to us and help us in make any decisions we wanna do to optimize our four fifty-seven plan.
Yes.
So would that fee that's charged to the employees be every year?
It would be off every, um, payment, you know, when, because the plans are contributory. So let's say there's, that somebody's contributing fifty dollars a month or whatever, it would, the fee would be charged on, on each paycheck like that.
And well, is that normal for it to be charged against the employees and not the fiduciary?
Because this is not a, there's no match, this is not a county-sponsored plan. So we, so all the, you know, the county's never spent any money on this, so that, that's why you would, you go this route.
But you, but the county's the one who's the fiduciary and therefore it's the county that needs this, not the employee.
Yes, absolutely. The county is the fiduciary and that's, that is new. I mean, that's not something for all the years I've been here.
Oh, I don't know that.
We haven't done, all the things now that we're saying that they have to be done, it's not anything anybody's have to worry about in the past and now we have to start worrying about it.
That's all changed in the last year. So.
Did you have a question?
I do. So, the employees actually charge them not when they invest it, so it, it wouldn't be embedded in the sales piece with that?
No, this isn't coming from, you know, it gets charged, those fees get charged to the individual funds.
Right.
But this is a fiduciary who has like an oversight, so he's not part of the fund, so it's not in the investment side. And so this is more like an administrative fee.
So they'll have the commission fee that they pay who's ever managing that?
Which they never see because that's.
Right, because it's embedded in those.
Right, which won't change.
Well, hopefully it'll be reduced.
But we'll know what it is and we'll know also if, you know, how the fees compare, which if they look too high, we can go back and ask for a reduction in, in the fee being charged by the funds.
That's one of the analysis.
Right.
Well, pretty soon they'll have a transparency against the four fifty-sevens, you have to list all the fee structures to the participants.
So, I guess what we're asking for is the ability to negotiate a contract with Bernie's firm, Advanced Capital Group, to come back to the county board.
And then we, when we do that, we can tell them, kinda, we could talk with you, I know you have some ideas about what sort of, uh, analysis we're expecting out of them.
And Bernie can come and be at, be at the meeting and answer whatever questions maybe, you know, asked at that time.
Sounds good. I'm applying. Okay. And other business, there is one other item that you want to bring up, is that correct?
Yes. So I'm Colin Frederickson and I'm new to the county. I'm the manager of compensation and benefits. Um, so what we've noted, um, we are legally required to get fifteen days advance notice when canceling someone's insurance. And those reasons for canceling is if someone's on unpaid leave or F M L A, for active employees that don't, their responsibility to pay their portion of the premiums. Um, we would like to propose the same process for retirees, um, to get fifteen days advance notice before canceling. Um, because there have been some retirees who, you know, haven't paid for like six months or something, so.
What's the longest you've had?
Um, it's been a year.
Somebody hasn't paid their premium?
Yep, yep.
So you wanna get it cleaned up and like issuing those advance notices?
Right, because once we issued those.
They're rechargeable.
Well, we, we didn't use rechargeable. I mean, this is a relatively recent thing and we're incrementally bumping it five percent every year.
Do they get a notice? That's accurate, right? Or fourteen months or anything like that?
I think it's one year, if somebody hasn't paid for one year. And I'm new, so I'm not sure what notice they have received, um, in the past.
Of course, the problem now is it's December eighteenth, you know, planning starts January first. Um, it's their responsibility to pay the premium, I understand that. It's also our responsibility, I would think, to go, to tell them, okay, we're gonna cut you off if you haven't been paid. So we have not noticed them, obviously. Or have we been going after them on a regular basis or what?
My understanding, my understanding is we've gone after current employees, but that's new.
How come we haven't gone after retirees?
I don't know the answer to that.
Okay, well, here's the day, here's the, this is tough because you gotta cut them off. Um, or you could get, you tell them you pay, you put, you, what do you do? Do you say, pay up and you can stay on the plan? Pay current? I mean, how do we do this?
They put a charge on me, right? Like they send you a charge, but that's changing.
They know that they haven't been paying. I assume that they know they haven't been paying.
Or they forget, or they think they're set up automatically with their bank. So what we started doing for two thousand nineteen is having a post-deduction from their pension account. But we only have, what, a third, I believe there is, signed up.
It's only a third of that.
Totally boned.
So how many people are, are out there that are gonna get ended, that are gonna get terminated?
Well, we wouldn't end them now. We would start giving them calls and give them notifications saying, this is what you owe.
Okay.
Make payment arrangements with them to get that caught up. And if they don't make any payment arrangements, then we would, uh, do an advanced fifteen day notice.
I'd like that.
Yeah. No? Yeah.
And I, in that pitch, I would say, you know, in the future, in order to, you know, ensure the payments, whatever, is try and get all these people to sign up on that program for Mutual of Omaha, which means less work for you.
Right.
And automatic deductions for them and really, you know, push them in that direction.
Right.
And the other thing is if you're late two or three times a year, hey, you're gonna pay a late charge, it's a hundred fifty dollars or something. Give them a late charge, otherwise.
We've been too lenient.
Yep.
I don't wanna do it the first or second time or something, but the third time's enough.
Okay. All right. That is all, must someone else ask any others?